We are live.
All right. Like to call to order the August 12th, 2025 Columbia Borough Council meeting. Could I have a roll call, please?
Counselperson James.
Here.
Counselperson Kaufman.
Here.
Counselperson Paul. Counselperson Fisher.
Here.
Counselperson Giezy.
Here.
Counselperson Burkey.
Here.
Counselperson Beauregard.
Here.
There you are.
Here.
Um, did anyone want to offer an invocation? All right, if you'd like, please rise.
My name is Pastor Dawn Harmon. All right, let us pray. Lord, we come today to say thank you. You have been good to us all day. We appreciate the blessings you have bestowed upon us thus far. And we're asking for your presence to be in the midst of this meeting as you put creative minds together, God. We pray for voices to be heard for compassion to be handled, God. And we pray also for leadership to lead in truth and in verity. We thank you for this day, and we give you all praise, glory, and honor. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Counselperson Beauregard, please lead us in a pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Announcement of executive sessions, there were none. Are there any additions, deletions, or reorganization of the agenda needed? I have a motion to approve the agenda as published.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Counselperson Kaufman, second by Counselperson Giezy to approve the agenda as published. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, citizen comment, non-agenda items only. The first sign up we have is Sharon Linder.
Good evening, just a quick question about the discussion last week about the possibility of changing the market manager position to part-time. Why did we have that discussion? Is the manager that's here currently leaving? Or why was that discussion created?
Uh, I was asked to do a business plan, market analysis on the Market House. And since the Market House reopened, we've lost between $60,000 and $35,000 a year. So, um, the plan was if we reduce the event times, we can reduce the salary of the market manager and therefore be closer to breakeven.
I understand, it's just she's not planning to leave, is what you're saying? So you would maybe cut her to part-time, is that what you're saying?
Possibly.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear, she was... Thank you.
All right, the next sign up is the mayor.
This is Brother Code Officer in charge. When are you gonna make these people fix their payments? Three months? Do you have an answer?
Where are you talking about, sir?
Anywhere in Columbia. There's 11291 South Fourth, it's out front here. Cherry Street, Union Street, they're all pushed up.
Yeah, I mean, I would suggest having a conversation with or the borough manager.
I already had it. Nothing was done.
I don't believe that to be true, sir.
I talked to her, straight out.
She's not the borough manager.
She's in charge of code officers, ain't she?
Yes, but...
Ticket them!
That's what I'm saying, and I... And you don't know that they haven't been cited.
When?
I...all I'm saying is you don't know that they haven't...
You know they're not citing them.
This goes for Jake.
You have not had a conversation with me at all about sidewalks.
Yes, I did.
No, you have...
We're not gonna argue in the council meeting.
Who is it, Giezy? I talked to her on the phone.
It was me, yeah.
About the payments. What was done?
You talked about them at the last meeting that we were at. When you were here, you said about sidewalks.
That was three months ago. Nothing was done yet.
And you don't know that?
Yeah, that's the thing. Those people could have been talked to, ticketed, whatever.
You know you didn't get no tickets.
You just don't know what's going on.
They've been waiting for repairs.
This one goes for Jake. When are you gonna finish cutting weeds down the river park? Ain't that part of your job? Then do it. This goes to you and Leo.
Sir, we're...this is your time to address council, not staff.
Okay, I'm council. When are they gonna do their job?
What exactly are you having a problem with?
Down the river crossing, where the boats in that go. What's that sign say when you go in there?
I understand that, but we do not have an officer stationed down there 24 hours a day.
They ride through there, 'cause two weeks ago, I was sitting there. One went through at quarter or four. They come back through at 5:00, and then put one ticket on. And there's 12 cars there. Years of losing out on probably a million dollars a year.
There could be other...
I think I should go buy some pens and give to these clowns.
People are being cited down there. We don't know the circumstances of those two specific times that you were talking about.
It ain't only two! How many times did I call you, Leo?
Counselperson President, if you'd like to address Mr. Ryan Neer.
Yes.
I spoke to him one day, he came in and complained. I told him that I would put information out to the officers that was gone. I complained about an officer maybe acting somewhat unprofessional. I haven't had a chance to see that officer, that will be handled. Um, I explained to him that we have today issued 70 tickets down there for the violation that he's referencing. Uh, today alone, five tickets were issued, including one written by me. Uh, Mr. Ryan Neer's behavior was unacceptable today. I drove through the river park, his honk, his horn, his yelling. I drove through... Evening, um, you better issue a ticket, you better issue a ticket. At my discretion, use my discretion. There's an older lady, explained to her where she was parked was inappropriate. Had her relocate where he was parked. Then on my way out, I issued a ticket to a violation.
And you went the wrong way, go on out.
We issued five tickets today.
Thank you.
So I tried to explain to him, you know, unfortunately, we cannot station an officer down there all the time.
Then Harris, security guard, to do your job. Case closed. You understand what I mean there? Harris, I'm the patrol at. 'Cause they don't do it.
Our officers have issued 5,900 tickets so far this year. Parking tickets, just parking tickets.
Not down there!
All right. Uh, is there anyone that would like to speak but did not get a chance to sign up? Yes, Frank.
Good evening, you all. I guess I'm gonna plead with Steve here. I know I'm not allowed to talk to the staff. I don't know how he's considered. But folks, I had a couple texts on my phone when I got home. Of course, I have my phone off when I'm here. But the streaming the last couple of weeks. What do we have to do to get to the bottom of this? And if I can, I'd like to pass it on to Steve. Steve is leaving. I would like if he'd just do that one thing or get that done. I would really be appreciative of it. How much have we spent on this? Consider often, I mean, on and on and on. Uh, it's ridiculous. The last session we had here, there was so much good information that the public had that they didn't have.
I get it, Frank, I do. Unfortunately, I don't have answers. I know we call in the company every time, and they say it's fixed, and it obviously, it goes down again. I don't look at that.
So, we've got seven council people, mayor. Something like I have an answer. Steve, you have an answer. I'm gonna go to Steve anyway, I'm not allowed to or not.
Sure, sure, to be honest with you, Frank, I don't think the system that we have is adequate. They spend a lot of money on it. They spend a lot of money on it, but it's not a very good system. We had our IT people in as well, looking at that, and they're just basically shaking their head at this system over here. The issue that we have is we're not the intent people. So every time that we have an issue, we do call the appropriate people in to check it. Then the next day, everything seems to be working fine, or they make a few minor adjustments here and there. But we're continuing on, and I feel your... We have to deal with it as far as trying to get things, you know, corrected. I hate to say that this system in here was wasted money, but that's pretty much the way I see it.
Thank you, thank you.
It shouldn't be a simpler, more straightforward system.
Now, did council hear him speak? What will you do about it?
I'll be honest with you, Frank, I've been holding back my recommendations to get into one because of the amount of money that they spent on this one. So we've been trying to make it work. It's, you know, it's certainly not from a lack of trying. And of course, we know we're using, you know, public funding on this, but it is maybe a time to look into getting a simpler, more efficient system. Talk to the company that's running our council. And ask them, um, if they consider giving up their system and see if there's something they can do to help us out. So we have, we have to address that subject without blowing someone else.
Yeah, and Steve, I'm not picking on you, but I know you're leaving, and I know you're gonna tell us the truth.
Would you do that whether I'm leaving or not, Frank?
Yes, I understand, but I think you hold back on a lot of things, you know. You wasn't here when a lot of this started, so like I say, I'm not... I appreciate what you're doing for the borough. Let's see where it goes from here. Council knows the situation, you know what to do to rectify it. And they did know, but nobody will speak up. I knew you would speak up. One issue, the other issue is 801 Wallen Street. What is going on there? What's going in?
Not a two unit, I know that.
By the what?
Not a two unit, I know that. There's a...they're...currently, they're fixing up the fort that we've been working on last week is the Rotted Wood, the second fort, fort on the side. And I live there, so I see it, so...
801 Wallen, yous all know where that's at.
Yep.
You know the curb and sidewalk was taken up. Now they have a...be able to drive in from the street. All brand-new sidewalk, the slope curb. I mean, is a repairment going in? What's going in, Kelly, do you know?
No.
Does codes know what's going on?
They were, you know, they were caught trying to convert it to multiple units about two, three years ago already.
Right.
And they had to switch back. I mean, they stopped work on it for, oh my God, nine, 10 months. Everybody's wondering what tech's on, where are they at? Now they've been back, probably since early spring, late spring, working on it again. And, you know, I agree with you, I don't like the parking spaces. I don't...I mean, you might fit a Volkswagen on there, that's about it.
Yeah, but it was approved.
Be my truck, I know that.
Approved for...it was approved for...
Yes, it was approved.
For what?
Not mine, no.
Yes, it was.
What was it approved...
Yes, it was.
What was it approved for?
Off-street parking.
Off-street parking.
Now you took three, four spaces off the street, and now they're gonna back in. And I would really like to know if it was inspected since it was done, because there's a wall in the back. You might be able to park motorcycles in there.
We don't inspect, like, the off-street parking, but all the work that's being done inside is inspected by Commonwealth code 'cause they administer our building permits.
But what's going in?
We do.
We do.
It is a single-family home that's being...that will be a rental.
A single family? Yeah, I went by the other night, which told me not, and 8:00, they were in there working. But the payment is what got me, because they put a wall in the back of where they're going to be parking, where they're gonna be backing in or pulling in.
Been in there a long time, Frank.
That's been in there a couple of years.
That wall was there?
Yes. They got in, that was all approved. It was all approved.
Well, it should have been taken out, 'cause they can't get a car in there without that extending out over the payment.
Being on the sidewalk.
So...
They also knocked down a tree and didn't replace that either.
I myself kinda thought that, because we change our personnel so much that they just got away with something. And it doesn't make sense to me, what's going on there. I just wanted to know if anybody else was on top of it.
Couple of weeks ago, Frank, just to let you know, a couple of weeks ago, we did put another stop work order on for the external work that was being done, the exterior work that was being done.
Thank you.
Without a permit. Now, there were...there was some discrepancy as to whether or not Commonwealth codes needed to be involved in inspections or not. So we reached out the Commonwealth codes for theirs, uh, but they still needed a permit. They didn't like it, but the stop work order forced them to come in and do whatever they were supposed to do. And that was two, maybe three weeks ago after the...
Yeah, I just...I just didn't understand why so many parking places was put in like that. And then they took the parking off the street now. Now you can't park in the street. So how is that making our borough more efficient? You know, so then again, I'm not blaming you.
No, that would all have to go through ZEME and probably the ZEME hearing board in order for that to happen.
No, it didn't.
It didn't?
No, it didn't.
So you don't have to go through ZEME for a curb cut or off-street parking?
No.
Okay.
No, it's a staff approval?
Mark, I didn't quite catch what Sharon said here. But the Market House with the manager, the work session that we had we had the last time. Counsel, we told you so. We told you what was happening with the fringe benefits, the wages you were paying. Absolutely, I don't know where you people were coming from when you made that wages, what you did for the Market House. Absolutely, and we tried to tell you, but you had your... I remember the meeting plain as day. I'm not sure if you went back to a work session, back to an executive session or not, but I know you sit down and right away, you made a motion. Pay $57,000 plus $27 for fringes? I had people on the streets saying, "Where in the hell are you people coming from?" Now it's falling back on you, but you've made the mistake. What are you gonna do about that now?
I don't think it was a mistake.
No.
It wasn't a mistake to pay that kind of money with fringes.
It's a full-time job. In fact, it's more than full-time. It's probably 60 to 70 hours a week. So we actually got them at a discount. But the reality of it is, the Market House trying to operate as a Market House on Saturdays and as a event space the rest of the time is not working. So to go back to 20 hours of part-time job for a one-day-a-week event makes more sense. But we tried. And we also knew from day one when...
CHI.
CHI took on the Market House and agreed to pay $60,000 for losses each year. Was it first five years?
Yep.
So we're not there, we're down to about $20,000. But this is another step in the right direction to save costs.
Well, should be good.
If I can add too.
Absolutely.
We're in a great spot with Bonnie over there as well, because she's not taking the fringe benefits. She does not need the $27,000 that your lady paid. She is, she does not take our insurance.
But...
Yeah, but the fringe benefits aren't all just insurance. So, and even if she doesn't take insurance, she still gets a stipend for not taking insurance. So you can't say there's no cost for benefits.
No, yeah, I was gonna say that.
It's getting to get me lower.
Well, we heard that at the last meeting about the stipend, which that never, never come up, have come up. So how much of a stipend is she getting?
I don't remember what it is, but there, if you don't take insurance...
You get one quarter. 25% of the premium for the family plan. So you have employees that may accept some out, you know, costs for their benefits, and then if you're gonna...
I didn't know that was written anywhere. And I never, never heard stipend. I wanted to ask when that was brought up last week, but I didn't get a chance. I don't know if council sit down and thought about it, but why are we having such a turnover of staff?
It's the nature of...I would...
Excluding the police department, I'm talking here, we have such a turnover. And I know some of our people that come in to get permits and everything, they're reaping the harvest because the left hand don't know what the right hand is doing. And it's just...it's just getting out of hand. If I can, and I hope heaven relates to this, the duties of our chairperson this meeting, is there anything other than the chairperson running and controlling the meeting over the other council people?
That is both duty as a chairperson, yeah.
Is there anything else that we don't see, that I'm hearing a lot of, that behind the scenes is going on?
I mean, to be honest with you, she is the one who's authorized. Heather, the chairperson, is the one who's authorized to speak on behalf of the council. Right?
Okay.
They are the person that is kind of the key. You have a borough manager, obviously, but in the case of the chairperson, they're there to make, you know, help make decisions when they need to be made in between council meetings, things like that. Obviously, those things come back to council then. But kind of the day-to-day stuff, the borough council president is the one who is able to speak on behalf of council and to sign things for council payment.
Yes.
The chair is also responsible to assign council members to committee assignments or other tasks like that as well.
Would this also, going back to last year, letting the chairperson do the budget? Is she certified? Is that her job?
There's no one that's certified to do a budget, you know?
That was out of necessity, Frank. We did not have anyone who was capable of presenting the budget on the timeline that it needed to be presented. She stepped up and did a budget. And that's, just sometimes that's what happens. I mean, I know you are used to a lot of infrastructure that you have. I can promise you that in a lot of smaller municipalities, that's what happens every single year.
But most of the time, we had a person in that role. And we're here, we're in the same predicament we was last year. We're not gonna have a borough manager, and we're not gonna have a finance manager. We're in the same predicament. And that's it. The taxpayers are being ripped off. We're paying to have somebody qualified to do that job. I'm sure maybe a lot of you people can do your budgets at home, you know, which I can do it, I always pay somebody to do it. But we're paying good money, taxpayer money, to get this done. Yet here we are, we didn't learn one thing to get a finance manager in there. And don't tell me you can't get them. It's like the borough manager, where are we advertising for these people? I'm all ears. Counsel, tell me where we're advertising for it.
Municipal manager and municipal finance manager positions are extremely difficult to fill. If you know where there's a large pot of applicants, please send them in, because they are not out there.
I'll go back to my original question. Where are we advertising?
We are advertising on online job boards, LinkedIn, you know...
So Frank, we have four...
The Boroughs Association.
We have four interviews happening this week alone for the finance manager. What we want to make sure is that we get the proper person in there, not just somebody that, you know, is new off the street. We've tried that, it didn't work. So, you know, it's unfortunate that we are...we're in the constraints that we cannot pay enough money to actually pull somebody from somewhere else or somebody that has extensive experience. We're not at that pace yet. So what we're doing is the best that we can with the amount of money that we have to offer. So it wouldn't be wise to just take the first person that came through the door if they don't qualify.
Well, I don't know how much it was, I think it was $15,000 that they put up before you were hired, Steve. And I'm sure somebody knew they were gonna hire you before that. No disrespect to you. You were just kind of green at this, that's the way I'll put it. But you're not doing justice for the taxpayer. And I also appreciate you bringing out, we don't have the money, different issues here. You let them know that. If they still keep spending, there's nothing we can do about it. The taxpayer, we're just gonna have to up and pay the taxes. But for some reason, I mean, we have to get qualified people. It just seemed like...
Yes, we do, and it's a challenge.
You're not advertising it right places or something. People gotta be out there. And I think, what did you tell me the last time, Kelly? People wanted to...how much money did they want?
Well, I mean, if you wanna pay $150,000, $160,000 for a borough manager, I'm sure we could find them for that. And you wanna pay $110,000 for a finance manager, I'm sure that this would be a lot bigger than what it is now. But is that what you want us to pay?
Frank, I also, if I could say, you know, times have changed an awful lot. Things became very, very expensive. So, you know, I mean, if the runner's over in my area in there, it's $18 an hour to make coffee. You know, so what we're actually paying right now is kind of base line at the lowest. And, you know, if somebody had a choice of making, say, $72,000 here to be a finance manager, or going to the county over and getting $110,000, you know, and obviously, that's different than the $110,000. We just don't have the tax base to be able to afford that. So we have to pick and choose where we best spend our money. Now, on the other hand, we're short-staffed everywhere. So there's not a...there's not a department here within the borough that is not understaffed. So where do you go? Do you pay $120,000 for a finance manager and then cut somebody else? I mean, it's balancing, it really is.
Well...
Yeah, I talked to someone today. There's a town in Berks County, not too far from here. They just started a guy, 30-some years young. Just a couple of years' experience. Started him at $264,000. That's what we're competing with.
What was her budget?
I don't know, but it's a lot larger than ours.
Effort to just advertise a borough manager's position, $120,000, $130,000.
Yeah, they're paying, their finance manager moved over from the... Moved over to the borough manager, took over for Nancy Harris when she retired. I think she's at $125,000. And it took them nine months to get her in place, because she didn't originally pay it.
I mean, really, at the pay level that we're looking at, sometimes you get lucky, you get a hot shot right out of college, or somebody that's on the rebound, trying to, you know, reestablish their name, and you get lucky for a few years. But you don't keep them for 10, 15 years. You got them for three, four years, and they're gone.
They're gone.
They build a resume, and they're out of here.
I hear what yous are saying, but we're at the same place we was last year. I gotta repeat it.
I get it, Frank, it's frustrating. None of us wanna be in this position again, but we are, it's the reality.
So I had asked at the last meeting, how many applicants we got for borough manager? You said you interviewed one. How many applications do you... How many applications did we get?
I honestly, I don't, I'm not sure because I'm not.
Do you know that, Steve?
I do not.
Okay.
That is a position that I'm completely out of.
And again, I understand where you took it, where you took this position, where you come from, the job you've done. You were here before, and, and you didn't have borough managers' experience. I'll, I'll be honest and say it that way. And, and, but, but through the different meetings, even for years and years.
Frank, can we move on from this topic?
Well, no.
I mean, we'd like to get the meeting.
I know, I know you would like to.
And I've been pretty lenient with the tone.
I know, and I know, I don't always get up here. I refrain from standing up at the last meeting. I, I just got to get this off my chest. For, for, for meetings and meetings over the years, I, I, and, and we don't have other people. I see the mayor speaking up during the borough manager's position, time after time after time. Maybe this is why we ain't going to get a good borough manager because he's going, speaking for, in place of the borough manager and don't have that experience. Here's a good time for you to apply for that position, Leo.
Frank, tell me when I've done the borough manager job.
I, I got tapes. I, I could show you that. Just about every meeting you bring out. But being that Steve, Steve is not up on things, and I agree, there's times that you probably could help to do that. But even when we didn't have a borough manager, you, you just seemed to fill in. You just go on and on and on. And here's a chance, if you want to run for borough manager, right here's your chance. You're not qualified, I can say that, but if you want to run for it, run for it.
Frank, let's not go there. We don't want to do that.
I, I don't care where you're going.
We're moving on.
Heather, I don't care where you're going. If you want to bring an officer over and take me out, I don't give a damn. Just got to come out. Hey, for I don't know how many years, I've seen this on and on. And it, the mayor's position is over the police department. He wants to comment on things, but he brings things out, you need to do this, you need to do that. And of course, I guess Steve is maybe not up on it, but, but I mean, this is all bull crap.
Frank, I have that right. As mayor, I have that right.
To do the borough manager job.
No, to speak up. I have that right to make suggestions.
Just like every member of this council.
I understand you don't have the right to vote, and I understand, I understand you have the right to do that, but.
As far as other things though, I probably have more interactions and, and connections with people in the state and, and unwilling out of goodness of my heart to help and use those connections to try to get things done for Columbia Borough. That's what I do. I'm not taking anybody's job. I'm, I'm using the connections that I've gained over 24 years in order to assist this borough. Where do you think some of this grant money came from?
I.
Associations that I've had.
I understand.
State folks.
I understand that.
And that's what I do. And that's what a mayor should do. I'm not going to sit back and just be a ceremonial mayor. I'm going to try to help my community. I have nothing to gain. I want to help my community.
Yes, and, and I will agree, over the years, that you probably did a lot of good things. And I hear what you just said about bringing money in and, and things into the borough. I'm talking about the everyday, like the borough manager is in charge of the everyday running of the borough. And there are a lot of issues that you're bringing up that is none of your business. You want to comment on it, comment on it, but you don't tell council. You have to do this, or you have to do that.
Anything that happens in Columbia is my business, the same as it's yours.
Absolutely, that's, that's why I'm up here. And I wish there'd be more people here. My, my problem with the people, the, the new council people that run, they, they don't have the time. And it's the same with a lot of you up there. You don't have the time to do this position. If you've got a 40, a 40-hour-a-week job, you've got a family to run, you don't have the time to do it. Peter's, Peter's a good example. I, I watch him. I watch that truck that he drives. I, I did the job that he done. And, and you just don't have, and we have new people.
That, that, that's, this is enough. This is enough.
Well, I'm about finished anyway, so.
This is enough.
But I, I wish.
We're going to move on.
I wish to just have some open meetings, some committee meetings. Once somebody's committees, like the Market House.
Right, we're moving on.
I know, I know, we're moving on.
We're moving on.
Go ahead.
All right, minutes for approval. Could I have a motion to approve the borough council meeting minutes for July 29, 2025?
Sound moved.
A motion by councilperson Kaufman, second by councilperson Geezy, to approve the borough council meeting minutes for July 29, 2025. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, presentation and acceptance of reports, councilperson Kaufman, community involvement.
I'd like to acknowledge the receipt of the Columbia Market House's report for July 2025.
Oh, sure.
Any questions?
Nope. All right, councilperson Geezy is going to stand in for councilperson Stahl, Public Works and Property.
I'd like to acknowledge the receipt of the Public Works and Property Report for July 2025.
All right, I have one question on that. Jake, as I am watching Walnut Street progress, they are going to have the street done before school, correct? Okay. I know, I'm like, I saw it, and I'm like, oh my gosh, they don't even have the street built yet. Oh, oh, I was getting nervous. All right. Okay, Mayor Lutz, Chief Bromer.
Two things I want to talk about. I think, Jake, I know you got emails and maybe others, but I got an email today about, from the Mosquito Born Disease Control Program. And they have set up two traps in Columbia Borough. And so far, with the mosquitoes that they have tracked, none of them tested positive for West Nile virus. They will continue to have the traps out there to test. And if, if they find West Nile, they'll come in and spray. So I'm sure they'll probably contact you, Jake, given when that, that comes about. So, so far, you know, we do with them. The mosquitoes have been out. I got bit a couple of times in there. But we haven't seen West Nile virus here. Thank God for that. You know, they, last night, I had a great night last night. Worked up at Jansen's, council president was there, working, folks, park rangers, Jansen Foundation, members of the, members of the church, 4020 Church owns them. Residents, just regular residents, Lions Club. They made, they brought. Those guys really made a difference. We moved a lot of walks last night. And I thought it was a great night. It was a great community effort. I was very proud of everybody that showed up to work. I hope they show up again tomorrow night, and we're going to finish that project. It's going to be wonderful. In the times that I've spent there, people come by with their children, children, scholars. As a matter of fact, last night, Paul Reston, I got Paul aside, and he was speaking to a young lady who had just moved into Columbia less than a year ago. And her kids were asking when it was going to open, and Paul was going over and telling it was going to be open. The, it's beautiful. It's going to be a great facility. It's going to be a boom for Columbia Borough. They will have cameras up, and hopefully, we'll be able to do what we need to do to keep that thing nice for years. While I'm at it, to tailor that with Maple Park this year, I think we're going to be looking real good. Maple Park should be finished sometime this summer, correct? So we should be looking real good for our parks and things for our kids to build. If you have some time tomorrow night, go on out, drive a wheelbarrow, grab a rake, and we're going to finish that project off. Had a good time doing that.
Yeah, we did. My son came in tonight and said, Mom, I saw a pitchfork in your car.
Yeah, it was wonderful. And I, I thank everybody for what they did. It really made me feel good to see all the people there.
And the kids. And I, I, that one kid that was, was really helping, he was like, he was doing it. And I saw on, on Facebook today, he was actually helping them with the concrete work, the sidewalk.
That's his brother.
Oh, is it?
Yeah. One's in ninth grade, one I think is in seventh grade. And boys worked.
They did, they were part of it.
So I, I, I do, I do, I know you touched on this last Thursday, but I just wanted to comment regarding another great community event, which was National Night Hail. So last Tuesday was another special day in Columbia. The turnout was great. I can't thank the highway department, Jake Wilson, Pam Barbold especially, who did the bulk of the work putting the event together. The list goes on and on and on. So we are extremely grateful to everyone and for the community to come out. So thank you. I also wanted to announce the retirement of two senior officers. So on August 1st, Officer Daniel Bell with 28 years of service and Sergeant Sam Stein, both retired. So they separated from the department on August 1st and had big smiles on their face when I met with them to collect their gear and, and their clothing and what have you. So we wish them well and thank them for their service.
They've been with us for a long time, so. All right. Action items. Could I have a motion to authorize the bill payments?
Sound moved.
A motion by councilperson Kaufman, second by councilperson Murphy, to authorize the bill payments. Are there any questions? Yes, Sharon.
On page five, the Lancaster Trophy House for Councilwoman and Parks and Rec, are they nameplates? What would they be called?
Yeah.
They are nameplates. So it says councilwoman is somebody getting a different name. Is that what?
We replaced the nameplates with joy and easy.
Oh, okay, but I thought that was our, okay. I thought that was on there before. That's why I asked.
The picture out there.
Oh, oh, okay.
That's what was replaced.
I see. Okay, thank you. And just really quickly, I wanted to say, very disappointed to hear Officer Bell leaving because he has always been very helpful. And just one other thing quickly. I know you can stop Frank from speaking if he's over his five minutes, but I really think you cannot tell him, we're not going there, we're not going to say something. Because he's entitled and allowed to say, so far, he's allowed to say whatever he wants to say, if it's within.
He was getting dangerously close to the personal attacks and the, the things that we are not going to do. That, that are not, that are against the rules of the borough.
Okay, thank you.
All right, are there any other questions on the bill payments? I have a motion by councilperson Kaufman, second by councilperson Murphy, to authorize the bill payments. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Next, we have the final payment for Farhat Excavating LLC in the amount of 52,780 dollars. Do I have a motion to authorize that?
Sound moved.
And the second. I have a motion by councilperson Kaufman, second by councilperson Murphy, to authorize the final payment to Farhat Excavating LLC in the amount of 52,780 dollars. Derek, is there anything you wanted to add on this? This is for the demo outlet for the McGinnis Project.
No, I mean, they made quick work of it. We did receive the manifest of the proper disposal of the departmentally hazardous materials that was found in the garage, with some boiler, with asbestos on the boiler. Otherwise, they left the site in good condition ready for the next project. I will mention this carries a one-year maintenance fund, but I don't think you'll need.
No, you don't think so?
Yep.
I don't think so. All right.
Am I missing something, or is there a, an account that this is coming from? Like, under 2025, it's all zeros, so.
Yeah, that wasn't filled out on here.
Okay, and what account is that?
It's coming from the, the McGinnis Project. The, it's a capital.
Capital, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
And this will get reimbursed after we close on bios.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? No? All right. C9, a motion by councilperson Kaufman, second by councilperson Murphy, to authorize the final payment to Farhat Excavating LLC in the amount of 52,780 dollars. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, new business. We are asked to authorize staff to hire Elise Crawford as the full-time planning zoning officer with a starting salary of $26.50 per hour, with a 5% increase after obtaining certified zoning officer certification, contingent upon results of drug tests and background check. Is there anything you wanted to add?
So what I'd really like to add to this particular hire is, this is one of those positions where I think we are getting extremely lucky. We're finding some young person, college-educated person with planning experience. One of the best interviews that I've been involved in in a long time was an interview Jack Paula and myself, actually did. I believe, Jack, you sort of like, we better not let this one go, kind of scenario, something of that effect. So we're real excited that she accepted it. She's from the northern part of PA. She's a Penn State graduate. She has two years of planning experience in the northern part. She has some relationship down here, so she's going to be moving down with her boyfriend into this area. So we kind of are working out the logistics at this part. I believe we have a potential start date of September 8th. So this, this young lady comes with the planning experience, which was one of the things that was brought out in previous meetings that, that you guys were really looking for. I also think with just the way she presented herself and with her education, I don't think she's going to have much of a problem picking up on the zoning aspect. She does have some zoning experience as a zoning officer, like being in zoning theory for those kind of things. So I'm real excited. I think it's, I think we got luck to get on this one, to be honest with you.
Any other questions?
Have some luck.
All right. Does anyone have a problem voting on this one tonight? Do I have a motion to authorize staff to hire Elise Crawford?
Sound moved.
Second.
A motion by councilperson Fisher, second by councilperson Kaufman, to authorize staff to hire Elise Crawford as a full-time planning zoning officer with starting salary of $26.50 per hour, with a 5% increase after obtaining certified zoning officer certification, contingent upon results of a drug test and background check. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Next, we are asked to consider approval to release the letter of credit being held for 315, for the 315 Locust Street project, contingent upon receipt of executed and recorded parking space agreement. I did receive that, I do, I, I did see we have an executed copy, but Evan, do we need it recorded? Or I'm going to leave this up to you and Derek to explain.
Yes. Just to go back to the very beginning, when this project received zoning approval, one of the, one of the conditions of that zoning approval was to have a, a plan for the additional required parking spaces that, that could be approved by me and, and would permanently tie those additional required parking spaces to, to this project, to the property. There was, I think, an additional 25 parking spaces that needed to be added off-site. And so they have, they've gotten that. Obviously, I think people are parking in the, in the lot that's beside there now. It took a little while to get this together. But I am, we were talking about doing an easement, that sort of thing. We ended up with this lease, which accomplishes what you. It took a little while to get this together, but I am, we were talking about doing an easement, that sort of thing. We ended up with this lease, which accomplishes what you mean to accomplish. I would like to see it recorded, just so that anybody who is potentially purchasing that property in the future knows that those spaces are going to be tied to the three fifteen, the three fifteen Locust Street property as long as there are the number of apartments that require those additional spaces. So that way, there's no question, because technically, that property where the parking lot, it could be sold separately from that building. So that's what that's what you're looking at here and why we'd like to have it recorded, so that way it's in the in the chain of title and everyone can see it.
All right, so are you recommending that we don't issue the, release the letter of credit until we see the recorded?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, can can I just add a little bit on to this one? In talking to to the property owner in this case, I believe the the reason for his request to release this quickly is because it's tying up his credit to to build a hotel. So he has this credit kind of hanging out there. Just just wanted to bring that up in case there was a way that you guys can word it to release the letter of credit, you know, provided he ensures the fact that we get it recorded or.
I think they can record it tomorrow.
Right, and I mean, honestly, this has been, what, two years?
Yeah, the recommendation, the recommendation is to act, is for council to act on this, continue to fund, then we will be agreed, so we won't have to come back to the council. And I will state, I found the initial release letter that I wrote dated October thirty-first, twenty twenty-three for this project. And they were made aware that this parking agreement needed to be made. So yes, so everyone knows this was not.
Yeah, he's known for two years.
Be an emergency, but we will.
Yeah.
Make it happen.
Well, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, doesn't need to come back to the council.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions, comments, concerns? Does anyone have a problem voting on this tonight? Do I have a motion to approve the release of letter of credit being held for the three fifteen Locust Street project contingent upon receipt of the recorded or contingent upon receipt of proof that the parking space lease agreement has been recorded?
Sound moved.
Second.
A motion by Councilperson Geezy, second by Councilperson Kaufman to approve the release of the letter of credit being held for the three fifteen Locust Street project contingent upon receipt of proof of the reported, of the parking space lease agreement being recorded. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, and next, we are asked to consider approval to hire Tracy Graybill as a part-time crossing guard.
Got you.
How close to being cool at the beginning of school year are we?
Very close.
Are we?
Very close.
Very close?
We had one year gap, positions open, so Tracy will prepare the one, so we're down to it.
A half?
Did an interview today, and I think we'll have a half, which was. It doesn't happen too often, and we have all the cases.
At the start of the school year.
It's Mike. It is because he only does mornings. That's the half. I know. Even halves.
Are there any questions? Does anyone have a problem voting on this one tonight? Do I have a motion to approve the hiring of Tracy Graybill as a part-time crossing guard beginning at the non-uniform contract rate of seventeen twenty-six per hour and contingent upon successful completion of required background check, medical exam and drug screening?
Sound moved.
Your second, the motion?
Me.
Okay. A motion by Councilperson Geezy, second by Councilperson Pergard to approve the hire Tracy Graybill at, as a part-time crossing guard beginning at the non-uniform contract rate of seventeen twenty-six per hour and contingent upon successful completion of the required background check, medical exam and drug screening. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, staff reports, comments and announcements, Solicitor David.
You may want to have free commentings regarding the the bio loan closing. I think as you saw at the, I guess, two meetings ago for you guys, we had the 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 application for the debt act approval. They came back with some questions, which I have relayed to the the attorney that's working for the Commonwealth Financing Authority and just outlining the project for this, for the person who's working on the debt act approval. So I'm hoping to hear back relatively soon on those, and hopefully we can get to this closing here in the next couple of weeks. So once we get all of that, I think we're, I think we're just about at the finish line now. Just need to get those couple of approvals taken care of. I know, Kelly, you had sent me some stuff to work on, the signs and some other stuff, and I am working on that. So we'll get that stuff ready to go here. I think once, once we get this closing taken care of, this is priority one and one A, so we'll get working on some of that stuff.
Yeah, we got responsible states, so.
All right, and we are good to go with the plan to have the hearing
On the twenty.
On the twenty-ninth, correct?
Yes, yes, that has been advertised. Yep, it should have appeared in the paper yesterday and it'll appear next Monday. So maybe the twenty-sixth, the cube.
Twenty-six, yeah, you're right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And also, I will just mention, thank you for National Night Out. It was, we were able to come over and it was a wonderful experience. Everybody had a good time, so the fire trucks were a big hit.
All right, Engineer Ronaldo.
Okay, it wasn't previously announced, we were awarded another two-hundred-thousand-dollar CBDG grant.
Oh, no, I forgot.
Perfect. I get to announce.
You get to announce it. I completely forgot.
So yes, the Three Hundred Block of Union Street was awarded a two-hundred-thousand-dollar CBDG grant. I'm happy to also report that our application ranked first out of the six applications they received. So that's a home run project. So with with your authorization, we'll begin work on design and shoot to bid that in the spring and start construction, I hope, in spring next year. A lot of work going on in the borough right now. You mentioned the Walnut Street project. We are working to wrap that up before the end of school. And I will reiterate, we've been having a lot of conversations with contractor on needing to get that project done before school starts. So we are holding the fires. So far, the weather's been good. We're feeling very confident. Eight Hundred Block Chestnut Street project started this week. They are clearing and grubbing out at McGinnis, and we expect Maple Park to begin work very soon as well. We've got good news on the bathroom. The bathroom, the order should be ready by October. Concerning not getting that anybody. So far, so good.
Secretary Treasure. Boards, commissions and committees, upcoming meeting, there's HARB on the thirteenth, which is tomorrow. Parks and Rec is this Thursday, the fourteenth. The Planning Commission regular meeting and workshop for the nineteenth has been canceled. And the Shade Tree Commission meets on the twenty-fifth. In your packet, you also have approved minutes for the Planning Commission workshop and the reg, uh, meeting from five twenty-one and the regular meeting from six seventeen. We also have minutes from LASSA. Borough Council comments, Councilperson Pergard.
If you, if you get a chance, text my gov.
Councilperson Fisher.
Nothing from me, thank you.
Councilperson Geez.
Nothing, I'm sorry, Jen.
Just for the chief and the mayor, just, I know we, you know, we, which we, a push in the past where kids wearing helmets and that, I'm seeing a lot, a lot, a lot of, I like coming down here tonight, I've used all Todd, there was a woman with a real young guy. You know, in front of her, there, two of them were riding on a motorized, you know, scooter, shall we say, in the street, and neither one of them had a helmet. So I don't know what we can do to get that message out to people, at least wear a helmet, I think. All you gotta do is, all she gotta do is.
There's a bill floating right now to go back and acquire helmets for riding motorcycles. I was thinking that when that, along with that bill, maybe we ought to try to ease into the electric bike and scooter type thing.
Yeah.
See if we can't get some. And I'll, and I'll talk to our representative.
They are fast. They're just as fast as some vehicle.
She was zipping along. She was zipping along. This little guy could be more than four or five.
I'm surprised there were requirement.
Motorized skate license or something.
Leo, you have some.
Yeah, I I forgot to mention this, and at the risk of doing the borough manager's job, I I received several complaints about the weeds on the Veterans Memorial Bridge, Columbia River Plate Bridge. I contacted our state representative, Brett Miller. Brett got ahold of PennDOT and they sprayed for the weeds today. So if anybody says they need to be fighting weeds, you can tell them they were sprayed today.
Yeah, I can hear a lot of things about that as well.
They look like they had been sprayed before, though, because they were kind of dead today.
Yeah, they're kind of almost dead. They just need to act down.
They look like they were already done.
Yeah. Um, I don't think that I have anything. If I do, it was the CBDG project was awarded. But I forgot that. So I would say. What? I know, I'm, I I know, I've been doing the lead long and getting good. I don't have to say that. C D B G. I'm getting, it's rolling off my tongue now. C D B G, I know, right? All right, announcing the next meeting at seven PM on Tuesday, August twenty-sixth, council will hold a regular meeting. Could I have a motion to adjourn? I have a motion by Councilperson Kaufman, second by Councilperson Pergard to adjourn at eight oh two PM. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We are adjourned. We have checks to sign.